Special meeting, this is a regular meeting of the Malala City Council for November 12th, 2025. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's all right. All meetings are special here in Malala. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public at Roberts. Rules of order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Audience members, we request that you silence your cell phones and not conduct side conversations during the meeting. Thank you. Up next, we'll start, we'll go roll call, starting with Counselor Vicinius.
Present.
Counselor Vicinius.
Oh, Counselor Vicinius, present. Sorry.
You're good.
Counselor Bartholomew, present. Counsel President Vermillion, present.
Mayor Kaiser, present.
Counselor Childers, present.
Counselor Gomer, present.
Assistant City Manager Matt Corthell, present.
Engineering Section Manager Sam Miller, present.
City Recorder Kristi Teetz, present.
Dan Hough, City Manager, present.
All right, does staff or council have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Mayor, do have a change this evening. I would like to move public comment to number four and presentations following public comment, if that is agreeable to you and council.
Absolutely. Council have any issues? All right, we will do that.
Thank you.
Up next will be consent agenda consisting of city council meeting minutes for October 29th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the city council meeting minutes for October 29th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Kristi, we call the roll.
Certainly. Counselor Gilmer.
Aye.
Counselor Childers.
Aye.
Counsel President Vermillion.
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Counselor Vicinius.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes six zero.
All right, up next, we will go to public comment. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete a comment form and deliver it to the city recorder. The city council does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to the city manager. Complaints shall first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the city council. And we have one request for tonight. Jill and Malala Chamber of Commerce, come on up. Good evening, ladies and ladies. Go ahead, state your names and cities you reside in for the record.
Jill Sprague, Malala.
Connie Sharp, Beaver Creek.
Jennifer Tate, Malala.
Excellent. Guys got whatever time you need, go for it.
Okay, well, we're here to challenge the council and city of Malala to a sock drive. As you can see, we're prepared, so we got a head start on it.
Do they all have to be orange and black?
No.
Oh, that's a really.
Thank you.
As you can see, they don't have to be. What we'd like to do is challenge you guys to a sock drive for our city, for the shelters, or the, I guess that's not the right word.
Senior homes?
Yeah, the senior homes and churches that have clothing closets. And we wanted to go from now, starting now with your approval, to December twelfth, or tenth. We'd like a representative from you guys who work with our representatives, so we have one from each side to do the official count. And the winner gets a trophy. And we can make it a perpetual sock trophy. Any questions about our proposal?
Council have any questions? I will do this as a consensus with our thumbs. If council agrees, would like to do this and whoop the chamber's butt, please go thumbs up.
We'll take you on.
Got it. Since you were very good with numbers and banking, would you like to be the?
That was a lot to go, mayor.
Certainly, I will count the socks.
I just know you're the most partial person for the job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chamber.
This includes staff members too, if they want to participate.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's nobody, there's no one at the city who's very competitive, so.
Where we'll be collecting the donations and.
Right. That's a great question to ask.
Are we going to be collecting the donations at the city and then bringing them all together?
So the ones that are collected for your side who go to City Hall and ours will come to the chamber or any chamber member's business.
So you guys can determine how you want to play and how you want to do it.
But the final count, if you guys get together, you have your file, she'll have her file.
Okay.
I will count. And then a distribution, you guys will decide who gets what socks, I suppose.
Yeah, there's a lot of local organizations who are collecting items, so we can figure out how we want to help and support where their greatest need is. Because there's enough programs kind of already started.
And you get ahold of city staff and our fine police department and.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. And their spouses.
Yeah, we just can't store.
That's why I have Counselor Childers counting for us.
I can count all day long.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Hi Heidi, glad to see you.
Thank you, Chamber.
We just can't store it by Suzanne's stuff.
So you count one sock as one.
We'll get a bit up front.
We're going to get a giant sock and put it by Suzanne's desk.
There you go.
We're going to get a giant sock and put it by Suzanne's desk to put all the socks in.
She has no space for it.
We have room at the police station and they'll be safe there.
Oh, okay. We'll figure something out and we'll, yeah, we'll figure something out. Challenge accepted.
Okay, so it's December tenth, a particular, is that like our next meeting or anything?
That is our next meeting.
It is for us. I don't know the significance of the date with the chamber, December tenth.
Our December AM meeting is the next day.
Okay.
And so we figure. So we can count it from now until maybe.
Sure.
Okay, I'll work with Jill and we'll get that figured out.
Uh, this is the second Thursday. Or this is Wednesday, yes.
Yeah, so tenth is a Wednesday, so it's the second Wednesday of March.
Perfect.
And it gives us time to give them, get them out for distribution.
Wonderful. Okay.
And while we have you here, when is your tree lighting?
It's always the first Saturday in December.
First Saturday of December. I figured while we had you here, we'd put a plug in for that right now, so.
Thank you.
We'll be there, we'll be there the first Saturday of December, or I will be. You're all welcome. All right, we will get moving on here. Next will be presentations, proclamations, and Pudding River Watershed Council, Mr. Corthell, we're ready for your staff report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I wanted to introduce this partnership to you guys a little bit, tell you a little bit about it and where it's going. As you know, we were named a designated management agency in the most recent version of the Volamet TMDL, toll maximum daily load. That has some in- increased requirements for us to manage stormwater and runoff and that sort of thing. So luckily, about the time we were named a designated management agency, the new director of the Pudding River Watershed Council Executive Director came on, that's Mr. Kurt Burning, he's in the audience right now with his daughter. And Kurt's going to tell you a little bit about the Pudding River Watershed Council and then I'll go over and touch on the partnership that we're working on right now. It goes towards our existing projects. These folks have some specialized knowledge, certifications, and capabilities the city doesn't have. And on top of that, it's a very good look for us in our TMDL plan. Partnering is one of the big things that we have as one of the areas that we need to hit in that as well. So it just was kind of fortuitous that at the same time, we had some needs that fall right into their wheelhouse. The phone rang and Mr. Burning was on the other end. So without further ado, I'm going to let Kurt come up and introduce himself in the Pudding River Watershed Council, kind of what they do, so folks get an idea about that, and then I'll expand on that partnership a little bit.
Yeah, just in case things go off the rails, I brought our legal counsel tonight, so. She's still studying, but you know, she's pretty competent. Yeah, hey, thanks for, thanks for having me and yeah, nice to meet Mac. I'm from Mount Angel, so Mac and I kind of connected over that. And then, yeah, we, we, so you probably know about Malala River Watch. That's kind of the local watershed council, but something I've learned in the three years since I've been here is that about ninety percent of the city limits of Malala are in the Pudding River watershed. So I'm not here to propose you change the town name to Pudding. I think it would be much worse. But just saying, it's kind of the opposite than you would expect. You would think mostly we'd be draining to Malala River, but you know that there's that kind of ridge outside east of town, that that's the dividing line in the watershed. So I've been a executive director here for about three years. And one of the problems I noticed is that a lot of our restoration work, you know, these awesome projects we do, are up in the Cascades behind some locked gate. You want to talk a little bit? Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Lisa.
So she's learning from me how to be speaking to a crowd. And so it's great, you know, we're doing this good work for salmon recovery, but unless you know the landowner, no one's seeing it. Just a second, it's my turn, okay? So the problem that I real, you know, pretty soon, just a sec, we have our offices, we share offices with the city of Woodburn. And we got in touch with the city of Silverton because they had just had a DEQ fine in 2022 and they wanted some restoration work done in the city park there in Silverton. And we designed a restoration plan for them, and then we actually started up our own in-house restoration crew to do the work ourselves. So now we have a four-person crew with tools and chainsaws and brush cutters and things like that. We did, we've done work there for three years now. So pretty soon, oh, very nice, pretty soon, we got contacted by State Parks and we started doing some work up at Silver Falls. Pretty soon, we got in touch with Aurora and we started doing some work at a city green space there. Now we're working with city Woodburn, makes sense, that's where our office is, on a Mill Creek Trail area. So we're trying to bring that expertise that we've gained from working up in the hills, planting trees and doing stream work into the cities. And the idea being, okay, I like the cross, everyone should be connected to a high-functioning natural area of some sort that they can visit. And so it shouldn't just be, thank you. You shouldn't have to go up to Silver Falls, it should be in town, you could walk to, it's a nice spot. So yeah, that's kind of what we are offering Mac, is we design projects, we have our own restoration crew. And we like to start with some money that we bring in through grants to kind of build the relationship. So we're looking at this $20,000 grant that's really easy to get, that we apply for, for projects like this. So we're thinking, we apply for that, kind of start the work, and then, you know, city funds could kind of backfill as we get closer to the end, so. Yeah, pretty excited. Thanks, thanks for having me all here. My daughter was at my grandparents' in Mount Angel today, so she's riding with me on the workday. So thanks for letting her crash the meeting as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. So I'll keep going a little bit here on this partnership. So after Kurt and I spoke, we actually needed some expertise that they offer over at Chief Yelkes Park. So some of the educational signage, that I don't have the qualifications to be able to write and do that kind of work. We actually touched base with them and they provided narratives and imagery and all that good stuff for a couple of those educational signs that talks about watersheds and that sort of thing. So we kind of did a trial run there, they did excellent work. Then we had a culvert that was backfilled, or excuse me, the creek was backfilled in a particular area of town up here. And we touched base with that property owner and they, you know, were not aware of the rules. And so we worked with them and Pudding River Watershed Council to restore the riparian area and their area for probably honestly pennies on the dollar compared to hiring a firm. I mean, you guys give a good price, it's very fair. But, you know, so was able to work with some citizens and actually save them some money on bringing things back up to speed. So it's been, it's already been a beneficial partnership to the city and folks in it. And so we're looking at expanding that and some of the stuff we have to do right off the bat. And then Kurt talked a little bit about the $20,000 grant that they're able to get. The other thing that, that he didn't really speak to is that it provides, we become vi, more grants become viable for us with Pudding River Watershed, working with us on some of this stuff than they would be if we went out alone for some of these things. Because they do have that clout, they do have the ear of those environmental agencies, and so they're able to actually go out and and get a little, be taken a little bit more seriously on some of these environmental projects than maybe the city would be on its own. So the first project we're looking at is the invasive species mitigation in the wetlands at Chief Yelkes Park. That was always part of Phase Two, kind of the leading edge of Phase Two, stuff we can work on during the non-construction season while we wait to get, you know, funds put together for the second phase of the park. And in principle, they can mitigate those invasive species, get those out of the way and get that wetland kind of restored to its natural state the way that it needs to be for the park to function appropriately and as part of that, that project. The second thing is that, as you guys know, we've been working on with the AMP farm at restoring the riparian area down at what we're calling Cemetery Park, that is not the name, but for sake of knowing what park I'm talking about, down at the Cemetery Park there. They went ahead and mitigated the blackberries out there. If you guys have driven by there, it is, you would be shocked to stand out there and see how much land there is. I mean, it's not exactly like a basketball field, but you never know that there was that much land now that you can see it. And then, of course, our public works folks came behind and removed a bunch of garbage that was stuffed into those blackberries, and so it's cleaning up. So I had Kurt come down and take a look, he's biologist, and, you know, say, hey, what are we, what are we, what are we looking at here to get this thing? And so we were able to get together and piece together a plan. Obviously, they know how to get blackberries and non-natives and those things mitigated. It's actually a multi-year process, followed by some, you know, vegetation that will help to shade those areas. Because one of the things he pointed out to me, which was interesting to me, because I'm not a biologist, was he said, he said, so how do you actually get rid of these things? I've always wondered this. I grew up, you know, fifth generation Oregonian, blackberries are a problem. And so he said, how do you get rid of these things? And he said, well, look over there under those trees. Do you see any blackberries? And I said, no. And he said, that's out. That's pretty much the only way. But he said, once you've got them, there's a multi-part process here. And so I've, Kurt actually put together this, this kind of outline. I of course reviewed it and put it together for you guys, but ultimately, it's about a, about a four, four to five-year partnership that basically gets the blackberries completely mitigated out of that cemetery park so that we shouldn't, I mean, we'll have to always maintain that, but it shouldn't be the issue that it is today, because even chopping them down, you go out there and you see, I mean, you're still chomping around in sticker bushes. They're just low. So that's a multi-year process. The other thing they have is the certifications and knowledge for the appropriate types of herbicide to use in the riparian zone without harming, you know, the runoff and the stream and the animals and that sort of thing. And finally, as you alluded to, they've done some trail building and that sort of thing. So just getting that kind of set up as a passive use park until the council wants everything's mitigated, then the community and the council can come back and put together, you know, a grander concept plan if that's your desire. But in the interim, while that happens, you know, we have some woodchip trails and a couple of seats and that sort of thing. So it's actually a usable area for folks just as a nature park until a grander plan comes together from, from the community and the council. So I really just wanted to introduce that partnership, introduce the Pudding River Watershed Council, talk to you guys a little bit about what we're doing with our enhanced TMDL requirements as a designated management agency. And this partnership is a big part of that work. So we're, I'm very grateful that Kurt called me when he did, because I don't know that I'd have known where to start with that. So sometimes you just get lucky and that's one of those cases. So if you guys have any questions, please feel free, or if not, if you think of them later, you know where to find me, as always.
Counsel have any questions? All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much. Say bye.
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 Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we will do ordinances, resolutions. Resolution number 2025-23, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County relating to Bear Creek culvert replacement and Malala Avenue shoulder improvement project. Mr. Corthell, we're ready for your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Council. I think whenever I have anything mildly controversial, is it okay if I bring my daughter with me? The shield that that provides is incredible. But no, this, this is not that. I don't think. Anyways, I have, I have our engineering section manager, Mr. Miller, here. This is another project that Sam, I've talked to you guys a little bit about this in the past. There's been more than one project that Sam has been able to, you know, get going with at, we'll call it a very discounted rate from what it would normally be to get the same infrastructure. Sam does a good job of recognizing opportunities, and this is another example of that. Obviously, there's an approval portion of this because it's an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County. The crux of it is that Clackamas County is doing a culvert replacement project at basically Seventh and South Malala Avenue, just south of there where the culvert is for Bear Creek. That is probably our main flooding area in town. You guys know when it gets super rainy down there, it actually, there's standing water in that road that gets, you know, up to a foot, foot and a half deep. So this will completely mitigate that issue with, with the culvert replacement. It's been on their books for quite a while and we reached out and touched base with them, said, hey, when are you guys doing this thing? And they said, well, actually, we're kind of getting this, this turned up right now. And one of the things we wanted to work with them on was to make sure that they built it in a way that honored our transportation system plan so that we weren't having to come back in on a brand-new culvert and do things like widening and et cetera to allow for sidewalks, things that the county doesn't always necessarily do on county roads. So we wanted to make sure we jumped in on that and didn't miss out on that opportunity. So Sam did, he jumped, he jumped in and he actually found it all. I don't want to sound like it was me. When I say we, I mean Sam. But at any rate, so he jumped in on it and, you know, was making sure they were getting stuff done. While at the same time, one of our highest priority projects is for lift stations in our sewer master plan is the South Malala Lift Station, which is pretty much at, if not slightly over capacity now. But it doesn't have any issues leaking or anything like that, there's no spills. But it's definitely in need of upgrade and improvement so that it can handle additional capacity for those areas that are going to eventually, and probably sooner than later at this point, be built out kind of east of Malala Avenue there. And so the long and the short of it is, there's a jurisdictional transfer as well as a two-part project. The two-part project is the, obviously, the culvert replacement project and the lift station upgrade. We're working together on that. We'll save quite a bit of money on our portion of that project, which is the lift station. The county will pay full freight for the culvert as well as actually building it a little bit different than what they initially planned on in order to honor RTSP so we can put sidewalks in and those sorts of things without having to come back and expand that culvert. So we get the benefit of both of those projects. We also don't have to handle procurement and a whole bunch of other minor things, but that are very time-consuming and costly in terms of staff wages. So it's really a discounted project based on those things and, and like I say, a high-priority project. So it was a great opportunity. And then at the end of that project, the city will take over to Malala Forest Road, which we have property already right there. And that was kind of how the conversations originally started is that when Danson's wanted to come into that property that borders South Malala Avenue, we kind of had to debate with the county on how the improvements were going to go there because they wanted to kind of build it to their standard. And we said, well, no, it should be built to the city's standard, especially because once they're in here, this is probably going to become a city road pretty quick. city road pretty quick. And so anyways, we had those conversations then and revisited it here. So basically, what this IGA does is that it approves, it approves that partnership on the two projects. The city pays for our portion, the county pays for theirs, and then the jurisdictional transfer to Malala Forest Road would happen at the end of the project, once the projects are delivered. And if you have any technical questions, Sam's here for those. If you have any administrative type questions, I can probably help you out.
Questions? All right. I'll lead off. What's city cost on it?
Our cost is about 1.815 million.
We have it, it's saved, where's, where's, where's budgeted?
Yeah. So it's, it's cash flowed for this year, meaning not all 1.8 is budgeted, but we won't spend nearly that this year. Because we'll go into bidding in December, assuming you guys approve this, where you're going to bidding in December and then probably awarding a contract. That means in like January, February timeframe, then they need to get their in-water permits, because the county has to do work in the water. So there's, there's some work to be done. So the vast majority, there's gonna be a good chunk that is budgeted for this fiscal year, and then there's gonna be a good chunk for, for, for next fiscal year. So by approving this, there's money in the funds to, to afford it. It's just not budgeted for this year, and it doesn't need to be because it's not cash flowed until next year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I'm just thinking of the first question we're gonna get hit with as soon as we walk out of here is, you're not gonna bond us with this?
No, there would be no bond.
So.
No.
And then what's, what is the projected completion date of the project?
That is actually gonna be in the fall of 2026.
Okay.
So yeah, so they actually have a small window, the county does, for doing the culvert portion of it. So their in-water work actually ends in September. So their post, well, they're proposing, or they will have the post, that portion of the, the project done. And I'm assuming, the way the schedule looks, that they'll actually have to do the pump station first. So they'll probably get on the pump station first in, probably in March, work on that project to get some of the stuff out of the way so they actually can build out the culvert. And then, yeah, so in-water works is the end of September, mid-September, and then wrap the project in probably end of October.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I, if I could have another chance to answer your question, it looks like I actually did this while I had all the numbers in front of me.
Okay.
It's been, been a couple of weeks, sorry. So the city has 750,000 of its share budgeted for this fiscal year, with an additional over 3 million in sewer contingency and reserves, and over 1 million in sewer STCs available, for which this project is approximately 40% eligible for the STC portion of that. So there's, there's, there's enough, plenty of funds to finish the project. And of course, that doesn't count any income for this year. If project cash flows meet projections, no supplemental will be required, but the remaining funds are fully available when needed. So the only way we'd need to even consider a supplemental is if they were screaming through the project and given the fact that they have an in-water window, that's, it's really not possible, because they, they can't control that. They have to wait, so.
And last question, you said it, this will be going, county's not doing it all, it's gonna be some of it's going out to bid?
It, it will all go out to bid.
Okay.
Yeah, the county, the county engineers and their engineering team is the ones overseeing the project, kind of like Sam oversees ours.
Right.
And they'll go out to bid, hire a contractor. The other thing that's nice is we should get a better price with the bigger project.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of a benefit too.
Okay.
So yeah, that is kind of one of the cost savings that the city is gonna see, is basically they're handling all the procurement process of it, where we don't have to put any administrative or hire our own engineers to do that portion of it. The county's gonna take care of all that. And that's part of that cost savings.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Oh, I forgot, this is the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? Let's see. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution number 2025-23, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County relating to the Bear Creek culvert replacement and Malala Avenue shoulders improvement project.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or discussion? All right. Christie, we call the rule.
Counselor Gilmer?
Aye.
Counselor Childress?
Aye.
Counsel President Vermillion?
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Counselor Bisinius?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Thank you, but passes 6-0.
That's a lot of syllables in those names.
Yes.
All right. Up next, Resolution number 2025-25, approving a contract for water intake design services and authorizing the city manager to prepare and execute the necessary agreements. Ms. Cortell, you're back up.
Thank you, sir. So this is the, the next phase of the water intake project. When we went out for bid for this initially, we had it basically to where the, the winning bid was also for the design services. And if we were unhappy with them in the pre-design process, we could always go back out to bid separately for design services. There is no need to do that. There's obviously a cost to that as well that we just discussed. Tetra Tech has been excellent. They're a very renowned engineering firm and well-respected. And Gordon Monroe, who's the engineer on this project, is, is just an excellent engineer. I don't have anything, you know, I can't say much more than that. He's just, he's great. So basically, this gets us through the design process. We currently are cash flowed for this total design, which includes permitting and some other things. But we're cash flowed for that through 25, or this fiscal year and next at 1,020,000 roughly total. So we've got 815,000 budgeted for this fiscal year. So again, this is one of those things where we should not need a supplemental. It will roll into the next year, but we've got more than enough budgeted for it for this year unless they were moving in an absolutely blistering pace, which I, I, again, just doesn't really happen. But I always feel like I should let you guys know that if it goes super fast, it's not gonna bump the total dollar amount, it'll just bump up when we need it. So at any rate, there's, there's currently 815,000 budgeted. We don't anticipate that we'd need more than that to get this started. Really close to finished, actually. But, and it doesn't impact the overall budget projection for that. Outside of that, I, I don't know. I think we've got a couple of other salient points, which is that this is the number one facility priority in our water treatment plan, master plan. And it's also in the city's current five-year capital plan. I went over procurement, and we also just secured the loan of 4.6 million dollars from the Infrastructure Finance Authority, which we'll be talking about next. And so yeah, so the project is fully funded. Just need to work on it.
Perfect. Counsel, entertain a motion.
I move the city of Malala adopt Resolution 2025-25, a resolution of the city of Malala, Oregon approving a contract for water intake design services and authorizing the city manager to prepare and execute the necessary agreements.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or discussion? All right, Christie, we call the rule.
Counselor Gilmer?
Aye.
Counselor Childress?
Aye.
Counsel President Vermillion?
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Counselor Bisinius?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes 6-0.
All right. Up next, Resolution 2025-26, authorizing a loan from the Special Public Works Fund by entering into an interim finance contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority. Ms. Cortell, you're back up.
Thank you, sir. So this is what I alluded to just a moment ago, the Infrastructure Finance Authority funding. They do this through an interim loan, very similar to the way that DEQ is doing it with the wastewater treatment plant. It, it's kind of irrelevant to our process. It doesn't cost us more money or anything like that. They just have their mechanisms set up to do, do that. And then they, someone, you know, they, the loan gets bought out by the state. It's basically the, the long and the short of it. Not at a higher rate, we're locked in on rates, all that, all that stuff remains the same. It doesn't change anything. It's just their mechanics. So again, I think I went over most of the salient points on this. For what, for what it's worth, we, we do continue to seek opportunities for, you know, funding that doesn't have to be repaid. And as those present themselves, we will continue to go into those. But in order to proceed with the project, we do need to be fully funded. And then we can offset as we go, kind of like we did with the wastewater plant, when we got, you know, additional 5 million after the project was fully funded. That just offsets. We don't take that debt. But we have to have it all in place in order to get contracts going and get things started. And so that's where we are right now, is that everything. And, oh, and the water, the water system has, is debt-free as well. So that's, that's also really good and very rare. So we're in a very, very good position to be able to, you know, service this loan as needed. And yeah, this gets the, the ball rolling on the intake project.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion, Counsel.
I move to approve Resolution number 2025-26, authorizing a loan from the Special Public Works Fund by entering into an interim financing contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any questions or discussion? All right. Christie, we call the rule.
Counselor Gilmer?
Aye.
Counselor Childress?
Aye.
Counsel President Vermillion?
Aye.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Counselor Bisinius?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes 6-0.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Up next, general business. First topic will be discussion on council meeting start times. Are you leading that, or am I?
You.
You.
Well, you're long-winded tonight.
No.
So our last meeting, we ended up have, we had a special meeting because of technical difficulties before that, and we ended up starting an hour earlier. And a lot of us recognized it was very enjoyable, having the council meeting starting at 6 o'clock instead of 7. For some reason, 7 o'clock now seems like it's about 11 o'clock around here. I'm not quite sure why. It's the first time it's ever felt this late. But basically, we, it, it does. I, I just don't get it. So basically, what we're looking at is, we would have to bring this back to vote on it. Am I correct, Christie?
Yeah.
We'll bring it back at the December, December 10th meeting to vote on it. If council agrees, we would move the council meetings to 6 o'clock and work sessions to 5:00. I also think it might be an efficiency measure, because staff gets off between 4:00 and 4:30. They're not waiting a few hours, especially on a night that we don't have a work session for us to start our council meetings. So would council be okay with that? Or questions?
I have a question. I'm, I'm concerned about having work sessions that begin at 5:00 PM, since we have people on our council who are employed and ran, you know, under the impression that we had meetings at 6:00 and at 7:00. I'm not opposed to starting at 6:00, but I am concerned about starting work sessions at 5:00 PM, and wonder about putting that at the end of the meeting instead.
Good, sir.
Can we pinpoint who those counselors would be, if any, that would have a problem getting here at 5:00?
Does anybody have an issue with work sessions at 5:00?
There could be times that that's gonna be very challenging for me. I drove straight here from Roseburg today, as a prime example. It won't be all the time, but there will definitely potentially be challenges, especially if I don't know with a little bit of advanced notice. With some advanced notice, generally, I can make that work. I don't, but it can be tough.
Sir, you look like you had something to say.
I was waiting. You're at council discussion now.
It could impact me a little bit, but just depends.
What?
I was just gonna throw out there, what if we leave it open to everyone agreeing if they're able to make a 5:00 work session? If not, we could schedule that at the end, possibly. That's what I was thinking. Leave it open that way, but just a thought.
The only issue with work session is a lot of times, it's, we're voting on something following that work session meeting. Is that majority of the time, Christie? Is that, do you see an issue with it?
I don't think that's normally the case all the time.
That has happened.
It has happened. I'm not saying it never happens, but I don't think that's generally the case. The, the other thing is, is as you can imagine, Christie is, is very meticulous about the meeting schedule. And she has work-study sessions planned out, going aways out there. So those are schedules that we can make available to you all, so that if you do have a conflict or something with the two of you, you can see it and you can let us know in advance, because you'll see those things. And I think you put them out every once in a while, anyway. The other thing I will say is, Mayor Kaiser's correct. Most of us are waiting around for the meetings to start. So like, if, if we moved them up an hour, we would, it would be easier on staff to do that. I know that's not why you make your decisions, but, you know, I know my wife will appreciate the fact I'm not rummaging through Ace Hardware, buying things that I don't need just because I'm wasting time before a meeting. So.
We'll get you that Amazon link on your phone.
It's not as fun when you can actually see it in person.
Sir, go ahead.
What about the times that when we have, when we, when a work session is necessary, we just bump it back? So the regular time for council would be 6:00. And then if we have a work session, then it'll just be at 7:00.
Christie?
Thank you. So what we're discussing is a code amendment. So this, this is something that if, if you all decide to change the time, that is an ordinance that needs to be passed. We don't have the flexibility to just switch back and forth all of the, the time. And one example that I could give is that our, our meetings start at 7:00 PM. And occasionally, when you have a full work session and we need that entire hour to, to work on, on a work session, we'll start our council meetings at 7:15, just so we can have a quick break in between that work session and when regular sessions start. That is on occasion. That's, that's not our standard practice. So I, I do want to at least remind you that we're, we're talking about an ordinance amendment.
Well. Sir?
I, I think I can make it work. I mean, I think the, you know, if we had, you know, some advanced notice, and I think I recently spoke with Christie about that, that would, that should work for me in most instances. I think it would be minimal impact. I would hope that, for me, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Okay. All right. So, yes, ma'am.
Another option, Planning Commission begins at 6:30 PM. You, you guys went straight to, you know, a 6:00 time, start time, or a 5:00 start time. I mean, if, if we're looking at people who have work schedules, perhaps a work session starts at 5:30 and, and regular session starts at 6:30. That, that's something you all could consider as well.
Okay.
I, I think 5:00 would be fine. I, I don't, it kind of creates the same challenges for me either way. So I would, I would say it's kind of a similar, might as well make it a little bit easier for everybody involved.
5:00 would be good.
Okay. So, sounds like 5:00 it is?
So come back with a ordinance.
You got it. Hopefully, it works for Terry.
I think she applauded the conversation.
Okay, good.
Your last meeting.
Good. Up next, Chapter 10.72.020, storage of vehicles or personal property on public property. And I don't know anything about this one, so go ahead. Something, but?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is actually the RV Parking Ordinance Review Discussion. That's the formal name of the, of the code section, is all. So we're, we're trying to bring this to a head, and so we can get you guys back an ordinance to review. So I wanted, I directed Kyle to just put down the salient points as they sit now for, for the, for the ordinance, so that we could kind of talk about the things that are, that are, you know, most, most important for us to be able to get something down on paper to work with here. So you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that there was, I, I saw some general consensus on. on RVs parked on public streets no more than twenty-four hours. Up to seventy-two hours if it's parked in front of your residence or an adjacent lot. No slide-in truck bed, et cetera, type campers on the public streets. Bump outs cannot present a hazard to right-of-way, there's existing Oregon revised statute on that. We had a longer conversation with Chief and Lieutenant Call. And, and, and they're confident that, that, from what I glean, they're very confident that if there's, if there's an actual hazard occurring, blocking view, in, in, intruding into the roadway, that sort of thing, that existing statute can deal with that now, so just, just an update on that. That's the public property portion, private property, this is the one that, that we were going back to the city attorney's office. And, you know, it was a great job by Kyle and I think Lieutenant Call, but someone from the police also brought up the fact that, hey, there might be a residency issue, of course, that's not necessarily a city issue, but we place our citizenry in a very precarious situation by allowing some of these things, if, if you were to do that. So, after discussion with the city, the city attorney's office, we learned that there's a, a risk of legally establishing residency after a period of forty-five days. Based on this information, staff is recommending that permits issued for thirty, that's our, our recommendation. Of course, if you guys wanted to go further, you can, naturally. Just know that there is a risk of, of, of creating a residency there and, and some of the issues that can arise from that. Caregiver accommodation permits may be issued for up to one year with extensions to be applied for. And then finally, occupying an RV during construction. As we were working through some other things that we're gonna be bringing to you, mobile food units and some of that, we were looking at our temporary use standards, and it, and it, it became pretty apparent to us that the appropriate place for that to live, if you're doing it during a building permit and that sort of thing, is in the development code. So, we're recommending that that be, that we work on a development and code amendment to get that into our temporary use standards on that section, rather than putting it in your camping ordinance or your RV parking ordinances. So, it just makes a lot more sense there, folks that are applying for building permit, you know, at the same time, so they can do them at, in the same process, without them going through two processes and all that good stuff. So, that was kind of where things were, were lying, and I wanted to get feedback on, on that and see, see what, if there's any particular provisions there that folks were wanting to see differently, or anything like that. So, that's where we kinda sit.
Counsel? Go ahead.
Yes. Public property, item number three, no slide-in or truck bed type campers on public streets. I personally don't find those as onerous as a huge RV sitting on a public street, and I wonder why we have stuffed that in there. It's a same thing, it's just smaller.
Oh, sorry, was that for me? I, I think the reason that we put it in there is because it was part of the conversation. Honestly, I don't think there was a reason necessarily beyond that.
Because I, I would, I would assume that that is the same as any other RV. And like I said, they're not nearly as big, so they're not even as, as much in the way. So, I would propose striking item number three on that.
Which, which number three?
Public property, under public property, item number three.
Item number three, excuse me, Mayor. Mac, was that in reference to a slide-in camper that's off the vehicle?
Yes, and I, I think that, one, at least one of those items, yeah, is that kinda your truck bed camper dropping that off?
Where they're sitting there on the, they're sitting there on the street on the stilts.
Oh, okay, then, then we would need to be more specific then, I think, in our language there. I, I assumed actually that that meant on a truck.
I don't think so, I think it's-
They're referring to a camper that goes in the Bakuba truck not having a truck under it.
Not having a truck under it.
I also don't think that that was intended to apply if you've got your utility trailer hooked up to your pickup and you're parked in front of your house or something, I, I don't think that that is for that either. I think it's, hey, I'm dropping my utility trailer, I keep it in the road year-round type deal, or, you know, when I'm not using it, kind of a situation.
Yeah.
We-
Go ahead.
We had discussed, you know, the seventy-two hours, and there was gonna be a reset period, are we still looking to do that reset period? To me, it looks like if anything beyond seventy-two hours would require a permit, so would that be taking care of what you're asking?
Our, our current code language has, I think, a twenty-four hour reset, don't quote me on the exact timeframe. But, yeah, I thi, I think there's a reset period in the current code language, and, and that's probably, I think, what we intended to kind of proceed with as far as the first, the first draft to come before you guys.
I have an issue on the private property side, because currently, you have people that own homes, and you have people that rent homes. And it was brought to my attention after we talked about this, that, for example, I rent, and I don't know, is it, you're talking thirty or forty-five days, you know? I don't think my rental agreement even allows that. And as a city, how are we to tell a property owner how they're to rent their properties? I think, I, I, and I don't know, I have never had an RV on my property, but my landlord reached out to me and was like, hey, this is, you guys are kinda stepping in our, our realm here. With, you know, because it, once, I know, once somebody is on that property for a certain amount of time, it doesn't matter if we issue a permit or not, residence, residency is already occupied. And from what I heard regarding discussions with our city attorney when this was brought to him, this was a very sticky area that I believe we, was it, was it recommended we not get into that realm? Is that the best answer?
I think they thought we wanted to do it, but-
When I, I think that they kinda recommended that it roughly be left the same.
What was that?
That it be left as it is-
Yeah.
-with the thirty-day limit, and, and one of the things I, I will add to that is just, and that the way I think that we're, we're interpreting or intend to write it, you know, again, subject to your guys' feedback, is that, you know, that, that, that it becomes allowable with a permit for thirty days, but that doesn't mean that a landlord can't restrict those things separately. It just says, hey, all things being equal, the city says, hey, yeah, you can have it there for thirty if you want. The landlord says, no, that's between you and the landlord.
So, can we have some language put in it saying pending landlord's approval? And it's not like something we're gonna go ask the landlord, but just something in it saying that if the land, the landlord doesn't call us and say, hey, blah, 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 and you have the tenant and the landlord, no, it's, if your landlord says you can't do this, this is no good, then it's null and void.
Well, I think when they fill out a permit, there's a space for the property owner to sign. It's no different than what we require for, if somebody's hooking up for water service and they're a renter, the owner has to sign that-
Right.
-application. The other thing to remember is, we don't necessarily, well, take for example, if you live in a, in a, in a neighborhood that has CCNRs, there's rules that are above and beyond anything that we require that the neighborhood, you know, the, the people who walk around and check to see what color you painted your house, and if you're keeping your lawn mowed, and if you have a trailer that's parked in the wrong spot or incorrectly based on the rules, we don't enforce those.
Neither do majority of the ones in the city, because if they did, we wouldn't be doing this now.
Well, I know, but we don't, we don't have anything to do with that. So, even though we adopt something, even though you choose to adopt something that allows someone to park a trailer, doesn't necessarily mean that the rules in the subdivision that they live in would allow that.
Okay.
And we don't, we don't, you know, we don't go after those things. It's like, well, you better check with your homeowners association on that one. And, so, just keep that in mind, too, we don't, we, that's just not part of what we do.
That would, could also be a rental contract, you know, stipulation, which would be outside of obviously what we need to be involved with.
Right, okay. So, anything else you're looking for on this, Mac, does everything sound good?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think I've, I've, I've got what I need, I may have to re-watch for a minute, but I, I think I must have got it, so.
Okay.
We were not gonna do extensions on the thirty days because of the forty-five day residency, right?
That, that was the intent, and, and again, subject to, and, and of course, you guys will be reviewing a draft ordinance, so if it, if it's not pass a muster at that point, we can get the language updated.
Perfect, alright, thank you, sir.
So, we'll, we'll get right on this.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, up next, staff communication, you got anything for us tonight, Sam?
I do not.
Alright, Christie?
I do.
Perfect.
I'm recording.
All good.
So, I, the, the main announcement that I have this evening is a reminder that we have a planning commission seat open. The, the significance of my reminder is that it is for folks residing in the city of Malala. Our code is very clear on, we can only have, we have no more than two that are outside of city limits, and we already have two folks seated outside of the planning, or outside of city limits on the planning commission, so the seat is for resident, Malala residents only.
Okay. How are we on budget? Budget's gonna be here before we know it, are we, no clue yet, okay. I figure I just started advertising it, that was all.
Well.
Do we still need members?
I'm sure we do.
Okay.
So, people are welcome to start, I, I generally start advertising that in February.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to rush it, I was just thinking while we were putting the applications out, so. Herbert, anything else, ma'am?
That's all, thank you.
Alright, Assistant City Manager, Court Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick things, I know you guys have heard plenty from me tonight. So, a, as you guys know, we, we got both of the grants for the O�re Storage and Recovery feasibility studies. So, that work is kicking off, and start doing the data collection and then digging into the, to the field work a little bit more, probably in a couple of months here. So, that, that's a pretty exciting project that could provide a secondary water source for the city. You know, that would kind of set us apart from a lot of cities that don't have that. So, that's a kind of a big deal if that is able to, able to go. So, luckily, got a grant, two grants, and about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of grants, so that's a, a good project. There's also a PFAS mitigation study that's also grant-funded. We're about sixty percent of the way through that, so we should start seeing some reports and different things on, on, on that coming up here pretty quick to start reviewing drafts. That'll give us basically what they think we, we would need to do, which may be nothing, but also what we can do to mitigate PFAS and what the different options are, and, 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 you know, rough costs associated with those and that sort of thing, so, good, good project going on there. And then the last one I wanted to share with you guys is a pretty exciting one, I was, I was happy to be here when it happened, is that James Clifton is now our lead water plant operator. And if you guys don't, if some of you probably don't know James, but James has worked here forever, I think, something like that.
It's about eight years, ten.
And I, I might embarrass him a little bit here, but he had some, some difficulties with the wastewater tests. He's a great operator, he's a great employee, and a really, really good guy. If you ever get a chance to meet him, I mean, they don't, they're really not, they don't come any better. And we moved him over to water, so he was interested in water, and he has been advancing with flying colors, passing all of his tests, got up to water operator three, and is what, what he needs to be the lead and the, and the designated responsible party for the, for the plant up there. And so, he has been promoted to that role. And, yeah, it's just super exciting for James, you should, you should have seen how excited he was. It was one of those things that, you know, you get to do that's really fun, so. I just wanted to give James kudos, he's, he's, he's stuck with it, overcome adversity, and is just a great example of the people that we employ here, so, very excited for him.
Excellent.
Did he win Operator of the Year a few years ago when you brought him?
He did.
For those of you who were on council at that time, so.
Excellent, thank you for that.
No problem.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, thank you.
City Manager, how?
Yeah, a couple of things. We had the deadline for the, and I say this with trepidation, depending on what kind of an article will be in the newspaper next week, but we, we received all the proposals for the library design RFP today. We received ten, that's actually for a project like that, that is a lot. So, there's heavy interest in that project. I actually read all of them today, and I was very impressed with some of the things that were written in there, and I think we're gonna get a really good product. It's pretty cool that, that we had that much interest in, in, in our project. Most of them actually commented on all of the other good things that are happening in Malala inside their, their proposals. I know that part of it's just, you know, people looking for things that are happening in your community, but the fact that they could find them was a good thing. So, the other thing I wanted to raise on this is, this is a design-only project. What's in your budget is the library design, okay? There's nothing in your budget or anything that the city has ever said that talks about a bond, charging higher taxes, or larger book fees, or any of those things. All we're doing is a design, so that then, when we're at the end of this design process, we can make a decision to go to bid for construction, which will also not include a bond. Okay, the city councils made that very clear, in fact, I don't even think we talked about it because it was never on the table. So, these are all funds that the city generates elsewhere. And again, we can't use the funds that we would spend on the library to build a new water intake system, because we just talked about that tonight, you just can't do that. So, and it doesn't have anything to do with the effluent that the city, the clean effluent that the city delivers to the Malala River that eventually goes down the stream towards Canby. Has nothing to do with any of those things, so, just thought I'd mention that. The other thing I want to bring up is, oh, did you have something to add?
Yeah, but you're on a roll, I'm sorry.
I was. And I was done with that one, I was moving on to a different one, but go ahead, oh.
No, I need to wait, please.
Oh, so, the other thing is, is that, as, if you recall back in your goal-setting session last January, one of the goals that Mayor Kaiser brought up was consideration of a lobbyist. I don't know if any of you that were around were there, and so, we've been looking at those things, maybe there's a partnership with some other cities, they're not cheap. So, something that might come up in your budget for next year. But the other thing in some of my poking around with this that might be helpful is something that we wouldn't want to share services with somebody with, but a, a, they're kind of like lobbyists, but they're, they're actually, they actually go after funding. They're head specialists. And I know I sent, Mac got back to me today on this idea, and it's like, yeah, I mean, we do this as we get time. You know, we do it here and there and there and here, and it might be worth a consideration, so I'm, I'm just working on some information to bring back to you on some things that we could look at doing, but it may be worth our time to pay somebody to do that work for us if it brings, you know, a dividend of, say, a couple million dollars to put towards the wastewater treatment plant, water intake system, or some other projects we're doing. So, just wanted to let you know, there's nothing to bring for you right now. And it's not budgeted, so, there's nothing we would be spending our money on right now, anyway, so, that's all I have.
Good, ma'am.
Thank you, I, I realized I had a couple more things to share with you all. So, on December tenth, you, you all know that we'll, we'll be meeting here next week at six thirty. So, that will be our joint planning and city council meeting, so I'll see you here again next Wednesday. And then on December tenth, we will be holding a work session, and we do need to start promptly at six o'clock. And then on December tenth, we will be holding a work session and we do need to start as promptly as six o'clock as we can. Um, we are going to bring to you at the work session. Uh, we're going to work on our twenty-twenty-five goal review from our January goal-setting strategic planning meeting. Um, we are, City Manager Huff is not going to be available in January to conduct a goal-setting this year. And so we are going to look at doing things a little bit differently. We don't know exactly what that looks like just yet, but to start with, we're gonna, we, we will probably have to do it in sections uh because of how January is, is with holidays and, and absences. And I'll let him speak to that in a moment and, and so on. But it might look like um a few work sessions broken up and being able to work through our goals in a work session opposed to a full day and then adopting them, you know, hopefully in, in February. So just so you all know, in December, we will be reviewing the goals that, that we set for ourselves for this year.
I am not taking the entire month of January off.
He is on standby, however.
My son and his wife are having their first child and we may need to bolt to go visit our new granddaughter, so.
Baby watch twenty-twenty-six is on the horizon.
And you never know when those critters show up.
Right.
Critters.
So I had one question about the library. So you, but you are currently looking for property to buy for the library, right?
No, oh God. That was, that was good, that was really good.
That was the other thing, is why, what, you know, where's the city gonna buy, you know? Buy land for the, it's like, no, it's still at, gonna be at the Civic Center. So, sorry, it was a bad joke.
The, the, the good thing is, we've talked about this at other council meetings. I, I, I should have probably said that, too. That was, that was really good, you got me. You got me rolling there, Scott. So the police department will be moving into the new police facility sometime at the end of no, uh, December, November, December. And eventually, we've got, those of you who actually took tours of that end of city hall know that there's some things that need to happen in there um once they move out. But um Mac and his crew will move, eventually move back into city hall, okay? And uh we need to do some work in city hall, not a lot, but a little bit.
Soundproofing.
Well, Mac will be upstairs, so. I think unless I decide to move upstairs.
Just because there's no basement.
So what happens is, is that this, this building here uh at the Civic Center and the offices that are over there, uh, well, not this building necessarily, but the offices that are, that is currently housing community development here, um, when they vacate, the library will then take over all those offices plus an addition that goes out to the parking lot in some fashion, which we don't know what it's gonna be yet because that's what we're asking folks to help us design. But we already own the land, we're not buying any land. So.
Excellent.
Yeah, and that's actually been the plan for quite a while, if I remember right. You all, well, those of you that have been up here for a while, remember that.
Couple of years.
Yeah, so.
Anything else, sir?
No, I was done.
Go Ducks.
Go Ducks.
Alright. Alright, uh, we'll do things a little backwards for the humor tonight. Counselor Childers, anything you'd like to report tonight?
Uh, yes, first I'd like to thank you, Sam, for keeping on looking out for those bargains that we can get in on. This is not the first time that you've come up with some really cost savings there on South Malala Avenue. And we really appreciate your uh tenacity there and looking for those things. And good on you for.
Letting him?
Having him, for letting him.
Just kidding, I'm, I'm telling you.
For letting him run with it, yes. And I want to announce that, that we're having a soft drive against the Chamber of Commerce. And those of you out there who would like to help your city council and city staff beat the tar out of Chamber of Commerce, um, can drop off your socks at city hall starting next Monday. So I'm watching Christie, I'm getting the nods. Um, so you know, Fred Meyer every year has their, what is it, Black Friday sale where you buy one pair, one sock and get ten free or something outrageous. And so you can go out there and buy up a bunch of socks and help us. And those will be given out in um, in some of the care centers in town and some of the um places where Christmas uh packages are made available to families in need and all of that. So the uh Chamber of Commerce will be active in helping uh get those distributed. And also because we didn't have any announcement yet this evening other than it, it'll be December sixth, the first Saturday in December, when they'll have the Christmas tree lighting. That's usually at five-thirty, six o'clock? Does, do we know the time?
That sounds.
Something like that.
Something like that, dark thirty. Uh, so just keep an eye out for when that is and come down and join the festivities that evening. That's all I have, sir.
Excellent, might I add Dollar Tree here in Malala, socks, dollar twenty-five to five dollars a pair.
That's right, that's right.
I, I double-checked that before we said yes to the competition, so. Council President Vermillion?
Oh, you are going backwards. Well, uh, last Thursday I attended the C-four meeting as the alternate, uh, our member couldn't attend. He was, well, we won't talk about that. Anyway, he was busy. The uh, the C-four meeting turned into the City of Camby Show. It was at city hall in Camby and uh most of the presentation was about Camby. Uh, starting with the production strategy, housing production strategy. Don Hardy, the planning director, went over all the pains and glory and joy and heartache of going through that. And I, I could feel that frustration in his voice. Todd Wood, the transit director, he went over, he gave a report of how they bus people all over the city of Camby. Uh, and then Jamie Strickland, the economic director and cheerleader. Uh, she was an energizer bunny of fun to watch and listen to, especially after, anyway, yeah. It was a good meeting and um I was glad to be a part of it, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you, sir. Counselor Broughtell?
I have nothing to report, Mayor Kaiser.
Alright, Counsel Gummer?
I have uh one event that's happening at the library next Wednesday, the nineteenth. It's for Medicare plan to see if it's right for you. It has an age limit on it, so it's sixty-four and plus. Starts at two PM and it's uh to see what best Medicare plans fit you. So if you're getting into that area of not for sure what you need to do, there's a bunch of people that are gonna show you the best options for you.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Counsel Besset?
Uh, last week I attended the Clackamas County State of the County uh with all the Clackamas County Commissioners. Uh, it was a unique opportunity to hear from the county leadership team uh about the challenges and the opportunities that our county faces. Um, you know, and there's a lot of projects and planning and things on the horizon that I think will be good for the, the community. The Sunrise Corridor Project, um, they discussed, you know, on multiple phases, um, making different communities more accessible, uh, and there's definitely a need there uh because I experience it all the time. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, housing and urban growth and developments and just, you know, the challenges it takes to get through that process and needing to uh increase, you know, home production and making homes more available. So uh I found that as a unique opportunity, glad I was able to attend uh and look forward to hopefully seeing some of those things, uh, start making some progress.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Um, let's see, it was right after our last council meeting. Uh, I got to go do a tour with Seth over at Sewage Treatment Fa- Sewage Treatment Facility. Um, Seth is like a kid in a candy store. When you get him out there, it is very, very interesting to see how excited he gets and seeing all the, I have, I, I will agree with him, the conduit in the floor and how big it is, knowing that, or in the ground, knowing there's gonna be a lot of line going through the ground. There already is some there. Um, but the construction crew, they were all very happy and nice and they looked like they were really enjoying working out here. Um, it was really cool. Um, before that, I went and did a tour at the police facility. Um, very, very impressive. Um, our construction, our, our engineering team and the con- the general contractors, they, they're more, um, they're pickier than some of our staff. I, I'll just put it at that. Um, they were arguing over varnish that goes on the big wood badge that's gonna be in the front entryway. They couldn't decide what color. And here's a guy that's out there on the floor putting varnish, all different, you know, he sanded down some wood and he's putting all different colors of varnish. And Dan walks up and goes, nah, not that one.
And I don't even see colors all that well.
But seeing this come together, um, it, it's really cool. Um, some of the officers came in and got a tour when I was and seeing their eyes light up with some of this stuff, just the space they're gonna have, the lockers they're gonna have. Uh, it, it's, it's really cool. If you guys have not done a tour of it, go get it before it's done. Uh, just see it before it's done, it's, it's really cool. I mean, the evidence room, uh, that was amazing. Uh, we finally have a place we can stuff Dan and he won't be able to get out. These accordion file things, there's like a bazillion of them all in a row. Um, but just, it was really cool. Um, take advantage of this stuff, take, go learn. Um, these people that work for our city, they love to teach us things. And I learned so much that day. Uh, next trip's gonna be up to, I haven't been up to the water facility in a while, so I'm sure Seth will be super excited about going up there. I know he's excited about moving to city hall. He, he brought up having a real office and so, um, it was a lot of fun. Um, let's see. Friday, it sounds like we're gonna have petitions for the referendum for the transportation, lack of better terms, ODOT bailout. Um, we're gonna have three different locations set up here in Malala. Uh, we'll be at the Safeway at the entrances, we're gonna be at Space Age Gas Station and we'll be at Troy's Diesel, which is right, will be right next to the taco trailer here, right at Shaver and Highway two-eleven. And then we're also gonna be going out to Clyde and Bob's seventy-six station. Most, during the week, we're gonna be out there in the evenings mostly, you know, three, three to six, three to seven, four, you know, that evening hour, but not too many hours so people can have a life. Saturdays and Sundays, we're gonna be at these, most of these locations and it's, this is all volunteer. So if we don't have volunteers, some of these locations may not be manned. Uh, but Saturdays and Sundays will be eight, like eight to six, both Saturday and Sunday. Um, I will be advertising where I'm at. It's a great time to come. You wanna ask me questions? You wanna talk to me about city stuff? Come on out and talk to me. Um, this Sunday, I will be at Troy's Diesel there on Highway two-eleven in Shaver all day long. Eight AM to six PM, uh, be my first full shift. Um, but we have locations all throughout the county. I know Camby's gonna have one at Beloved Cheesecake, one at the Liquor Store, I think one at the Space Age. Um, Kissin' Kate's in Beaver, Beaver Creek. There's a parking lot across the street, they're gonna have one. And I think Malino Store's gonna have one. And I haven't heard where Oregon City's, she's got a whole bunch of stops that she's gonna have over there. But this is gonna go throughout the entire state. Um, we found out today, I believe in, it was thir- we have thirty-seven-hundred volunteers statewide to help with this initiative. And we need seventy-four thousand, was it seven, seventy-eight thousand four hundred signatures, valid signatures to get this on the ballot. And when we get those signatures, it'll be on next November's ballot unless legislature goes in and decides to change something. Um, what is on the referendum is the gas tax, registration fees, title fees and the raising of the, our wage tax, or on our, tax on our wages. Um, all the rest of it is gonna stay on there, which one of the things on there is keeping tolling away. So that's why they didn't refer the whole bill, they referred four parts to it. So stop by, come sign. Um, I know Counsel Vermillion has signed up to be, stepped up to be a volunteer. If anybody wants to be a volunteer, uh, go to notaxor.com. Uh, fill in the, the information that you wanna be a volunteer. And then our famous state representative, Rick Lewis, his secretary is actually the director of this. Show forward your information to whatever captain, if you're in the Malala Colton area, get forwarded to myself and Paige Lance, uh, we'll get you on the schedule. Um, real easy, you know? Most people know about this, there's not a lot of talking. If, you know, if you want gas tax, if you don't want the gas tax to go up, come sign it. And it's, it's that simple. And we have some literature there to help guide people, questions, stuff like that. Uh, but we'll be very visible. Um, I believe our goal is, we'd like to be done before the end of this month, which is very, very assertive. Um, we have to have signatures turned in by December thirtieth. Uh, oh, and then the people, the signers of this referendum is Representative Ed Deal, State Senator Bruce Stock and Jason Williams, which he belongs to a tax coalition PAC group. All three of them are the signers on this. Um, so come on out, let's get it signed, let's get it done. Malala's goal's forty-five hundred. Personally, I think we can get about seven thousand signatures out of this area because it's not just the city, it's anybody registered in the community. So that's about it. So we'll be out all Thanksgiving in Christmas season trying to get these signatures, hopefully just Thanksgiving, so.
You have to be a registered voter.
Registered voter in Oregon. It doesn't matter where you live, as long as you're a registered voter in Oregon, you can sign it and it counts. So it, it doesn't go by cities or counties or anything like that, so. With that, I will, for the good of the, if there is anything else for the good of the order, I will adjourn this meeting at eight-twenty. Good night, Malala.